All right, so I guess tonight with the work session, we'll do a brief comments section. We'll get into the agenda to review and take any work questions after that. And then we do have the break for an executive session for personnel slash leader. I guess at this point, does anybody here say something? Public comment. Yes.
How's everyone been? I had to use GPS to get to this room. I haven't been here in so long.
Welcome back.
Thank you. My name's Victoria Barkerall. I don't know if that goes with the end. I wrote this so I could be as brief as possible, don't laugh, and I'm not asked to sit down. And honestly, I really don't think it's anybody else's business who's here tonight, but I'm not getting answers otherwise. Just three quick things. I'm just coming back from seven school days of being quarantined due to COVID-19. And actually, I could have come back to 27, so I'm okay. And since I'm a sub and the government isn't compensating anymore, I will not be receiving a check for the seven days that I missed. Number two. As most of you know, I fell in the school back in October carrying perrukeys for the football game. I ended up being out of work for over a month. Though I asked, I was never told specific details of when, if, and how I could work, where I could work, how much I was making a day until after I returned to school. Throughout the Christmas holiday in January, I had no income. I was asked to drive a bus numerous days by cruise bus lines, but I said no because I thought I wasn't allowed to. I found out afterwards that I could have. To make money for my family, which all of you would do, I would pop four to five Advil, then driven the bus each day. And the difference is a couple thousand dollars between the bus and not making as much as I would make every day. In addition, whenever anyone spoke to me, either from the school or from the workman's comp people about the incident, I was spoken to with an accusatory tone and feeling quite guilty, as if I was doing something wrong. I had never had a workman's comp case, nor did I know anyone who did, so I had no idea what to do. However, none of them were in my, as they spoke to me like that, none of them were in my car. As I was one day driving from doctor, wincing in such excruciating pain, it made my labor pain seem mild when I had children. No one was at my house when I was lying face up in bed for days, not even being able to breathe because the pressure of my lungs pressing against my back and my hips were so agonizing, I thought I was going to pass out. And sadly, not one, as much as I love everybody in the school district, not once did anyone from the school ever call me to see how I was feeling. Just kept getting that guilt, that guilt with your milk in it type attitude. Three, varsity club advisor. As you know, I am the varsity club advisor. And once again, I'm asking to be paid for the varsity club assistant position. Two years ago, I was a varsity club advisor and Cindy Rizzi was the assistant. Cindy ordered all the food, went to Sam's Club, picked up food and supplies, paid all the vendors, took inventory, consulted with vendors, and had her own credit card for Sam. Cindy also kept records of the athletes who worked the games, consulted with the company who measured the athletes for leatherman's jackets and ordered the jackets. She organized all the trophies, awards, and awards for all the athletes. This year, Cindy is retired, and no matter how many advertisements I put out or I put on Facebook, and no matter how many times Stu Romansky put her on the website, no one, no one wanted the assistant position. So I did it all myself, including cooking all the food. Two years ago, Rick and Jennifer Hope were gracious enough to help out at the boys' basketball games. This year, thank God, Gary's wife stepped in for one of the football games, which I love so much. They stepped in for the basketball games, but this year, I was at 99% of the games. I had trouble getting student athletes to volunteer and even adults because of COVID. So many people didn't want to be there. So I had trouble students to get there, and there were so many games that I worked myself to where somebody, I think from Valley View, a woman saw me and she jumped behind the counter with me. So in addition to the six hours, the seven hours that I was teaching all day, I jumped right into the finishing and did another six hours, as opposed to the football games where I was here for like 18 hours or something. And the only thing left was me, my flashlight, and tumbleweed going from the concession stand to my car. And this is going against my pride, but I have to ask you guys for a third time and if I can get paid for the assistant position. Because I have done everything this year. It is a year-long position, and I've just done it all. The end. But please, I've heard we'll discuss it so many times already. I hate asking for money for myself. I hate doing that, but I have to.
All right. Thank you very much. We can't discuss that publicly. That's something we have to discuss in the executive session. And if you'd like to, as we have spoken to you previously, we've spoken in the past personally, I'd be happy to meet with you again.
Right. I understand, Dr. Barrett, but this is now, I say the third, it's probably the fourth time.
Again, this, you have to maintain some confidentiality on your behalf.
Right.
Okay, and out of respect for you and...
I understand, and I appreciate that. But I'm wondering when will I have an answer? Because now it's the third, fourth time I've talked to some of you individually, but there's no answer.
I believe I can give you answers.
Right. You gave me answers, which I can also comment, like how, you know, a baseball coach assistant wouldn't get that. That's a couple months. That's a couple months long. And this position, a baseball coach, he doesn't have to do what his assistant would do. I had to do this. I mean, this is, I had to do it. I had to go to the store and I had to talk to the vendors and drive. And the worst part is, I never knew where I was teaching every day. You know, so I made sure I was around there. And you ask people, here's me trying not to run down the hallways and like push a car to getting there in my lunch period, going down to that stand to start opening things up or whatnot, and always, you know, always being at all the games. And when I was out, like for two games, I think Bob had to do it himself. And I came in when I was on workman's comp, told I had to be there for six hours when the doctor only said two hours sitting. And I was like, I was up to get this moving. So my question is, when will this decision be made? I understand you can't talk about it now, but when will it be made? It's going on for months. And then it's going to be April, May, and we're going to be out of school.
We will, we are going to have an executive session after tonight. So we will talk about it again, because I know we've touched on it a couple times, and I know you have individually, some of us have. So we will absolutely have a discussion. And then Dr. Barrett will, I think he already has talked about some of your concerns, but he'll make sure that you are fully aware of where, what the decisions were.
So we're going to have a decision soon?
I believe so.
Thanks.
I believe we already did.
I'm sorry?
I believe we already did, but...
Yeah, but we'll clarify.
We'll clarify and get back to you again.
The only question I have with earlier you just said there, so the daytime position, when you said those long days, the subbing, you can opt in or out on those days. Am I correct?
What do you mean?
As far as you don't have to sub on a day if the date is too long for you. The days, and I'm not talking about financial reasons. I'm talking about you're not, you're not already committed to, you can pass up.
I don't have to, no, I don't have to take that.
Just to cover your days if your days are getting too long at that? You know, whichever you might have to pick and choose which is going to be the primary. And I'm not telling you how to run that. I mean, if you think you can handle it.
And what I didn't do and I should have done is counted up all the games, because that would have been thousands of dollars that I didn't receive if I just stayed home. You know, so...
And we know you put in a ton of time. We do appreciate it.
You know, when I start knowing the custodia's birthdays, that's, you're like, hey, how you doing tonight? You know, and it's getting bad when I know their birthday, so. All right. Thank you. I hope you make the decision soon.
We will. We'll make sure that you're aware of it.
Anyone else at this moment? Okay, moving along. We'll get into the agenda. All right. We have call to order, prayer, approval of minutes, trainer's report, field bills. We will have student recognition. And then our recognition of public comments. Enrollment report is as listed there. Going down to number 11, we have our school calendar for the end of the school year. So currently, hopefully, barring any unforeseen weather closures or emergency closures, we're looking to have our last school day on Thursday, June 9. And that would be graduation as well. And then Wednesday, June 8, would be the last teacher in-service day. No school for students, and that's typically used to get documentation, grades, paperwork, all that stuff submitted prior to the last day of school so that the students can go home with their grades. Also, Mr. Kudorski did link with the senior class and took a survey asking when they would prefer the graduation day to be, whether it be the last day of school or the next day's Friday. So they voted that they wanted it outdoors, last day of school. So in the event that there's inclement weather on that Thursday, we would postpone it to the next evening. And if that's bad as well, we'll postpone it to the Saturday morning.
What's the time of the...
Six o'clock.
Oh, okay.
Number 12 is a motion to appoint a real estate transfer tax collector. And that would be from the Wayne County Deputy Realty Tax Collector. And that's for the next school year. Number 13 is an agreement. This is the company we've been working with the past several years, Central Cecil Hannah Community Unit. This is for our student information system as well as our employee portal. This includes all of the stuff such as transportation, attendance, absenteeism, grades, accounts payable. It's a very comprehensive program. This is slightly higher rate than last year, a few cents per student. The approximate total cost is, I guess, they're $49,000 for next school year.
What's the account payable for the students?
The account's payable, that's actually from the business office. That's our, that's payable. They base it on, they base the cost on the number of students in the district.
Okay.
That's where, the per student cost.
Okay.
They're based on per student, but that's actually the software that we use in the business.
So like the personnel would be the teachers and whatnot?
Yes.
So it doesn't matter how many teachers it is, it's just based on students?
It's based on student counts. Yeah.
Did we implement this for the lower grade? Because I know that it was at the high school level, so all the kids have it now? Okay.
Appreciate it as well. Number 14, transportation fuel subsidy. This is something we have to discuss. So as a result of the extraordinarily high fuel costs, we're looking to supplement some of the, well, all of the bus contractors and van drivers, a little bit of the subsidy to offset some of the cost for those rising prices. So Rose, you want to just give a summary of where we're at with that?
Yeah, sure. So what we're recommending is if we give a subsidy based on diesel vehicles and then gas vehicles. When looking at it, it would be a subsidy per mile driven. That's what we can equate to based on the information that we have on all of the contractors. And if we were to go with 10 cent subsidy for diesel vehicles and 4 cent subsidy for gas vehicles, the approximate cost would go, would be about $43,000. And that would run, that subsidy would run from February 22 through the end of the school year for all of the contractors. And that would get paid out like around the same time. If we just, April 1 is our next payment to the contractors. So if it does get approved next week, we would look at paying that right at the board meeting. And then going forward, we would pay it at the same time as we make the monthly payment to the contractors.
And this would be for the remainder of the school year. Maybe these contractors, they're barely breaking even on many of these runs. And obviously, the fuel costs have put a real burden on making any profit whatsoever. So this is to help them out a little bit, provide us with the services that we need on a yearly basis. Rose, you mentioned sort of that we're looking at 10, 10 cents...
10 cents for diesel vehicles and 4 cents for gas vehicles.
Which would be about...
Which, most of the, most of the gas vehicles are only vans, but there are a few contractors that still have gas buses.
And that was, I know we were checking around nearby districts were doing similar to that, I believe. And I know we were checking with the van, some of the bus drivers, that they felt a little more. Did you do any numbers on any large amounts you do?
You did.
12 and 5, I think, was one of the numbers.
Yeah. I remember some 12 and 5. Like 12 cents would be diesel and 5 cents for gas. So instead of 43, I think it's like 53. So about 10,000 more if you went with the higher reimbursement per mile.
Yeah, I know. Gary inquired too. And I think that was where some of the bus drivers felt comfortable was around that 12% threshold. But I don't know, except for, obviously for discussion, everyone uncomfortable at that. I don't know if anybody had any input.
I was just wondering about, you mentioned that we have some buses that are gas powered. Obviously, they're consuming fuel at a much greater rate per mile than are the vans. Should we consider maybe like a 10 cent diesel, 8 cent gas bus, then the 4 cent for the vans? Because the consumption is going to be, it seems like we're being unfair in relationship to gas powered buses.
I mean...
Yeah, we only have, I would imagine, as full-size buses are probably none, right? But many buses in that...
Full-size bus, I know somebody who has, they switch to gas and diesel to get...
Do they, to gas?
Because of the cold weather.
Yeah, and I would imagine, I mean, I know that the big diesels are around 10. I would guess those regular gas powered buses are probably in that, in that range. Their problem would not dramatically lower, are they, other size of vehicle?
Because I know that someone on top of, like on standby, because we had a week for, we, during wrestling, we were waiting for a bus and the diesel froze. So they kind of send a gas one over, but it wasn't one that they typically use. So is it just a backup? So that's a question too.
These are the active, active buses.
So the gas buses, how many?
Yeah, we figured out. So there are active gas run buses. Yeah. We did check that to make sure we were looking at the right numbers.
There's only a couple. Right, right.
And so probably...
Yeah, we still want to...
I still want to do something there. Even if you're driving a gas powered minibus, you're still, your mileage is not going to be the same as the little van runs. You know, you're going to be using more...
Yeah, because you say a minivan goes like 20 miles per gallon. Or big buses, they're like, maybe you can get 10 hours.
Right, you're not going to get 10.
Do you want to figure like the 10, the 10 cents? Or like we were talking about the 12 and 5, the 12 cents for all buses? And then the 5? If you can look at it that way too?
Yeah, that's where I thought we were heading.
Or if you want to do another step in there, we can do that too.
Well, we know diesel prices are a bit higher than gas prices for, yeah. And I don't know, the mileage increases more to give better mileage or whatever. But I just don't see, I don't see knowing...
I know which ones.
All right, but they get paid differently than the other bus runs? It's strictly mileage structure?
It's kind of like a formula. It's miles and age of the bus and passenger count. So it's not, the formula itself does not take into consideration diesel or gas.
Okay.
So a gas bus has a bus run, which basically is around the area sticks to where they have to go. Gas van, right? Some of the gas vans are going to have 100 miles a day or plus. So I don't, are the gas buses doing that? Probably not, I would think. You know, I'm trying to, trying to put my picture, I'm not saying against what you're saying, but...
Right. I'm just saying, I would rather differentiate between a van and a bus than it would between diesel and gas in that respect. Because of the amount of, you know, if you're paying by the miles, you're going to have a higher consumption rate in a bus than you are in a van by far.
How much been increased are these options over the baseline of contract?
Joe, you had a handle on that. I was just asked how much, when you ran the numbers of 10 cents for your own run, it was, did you tell me about $30 per...
It's not much.
Per pay period or per week? I don't remember.
15 days pay period, basically, so.
So it made about $30 difference for an average up to just a van run. So it didn't cover the cost of increased fuel?
For myself, say I have 50 miles a day, times 4 cents, times 15 days. It's not, it's not a great amount to that, somebody that has a small one, one run van, you know. But something, it's maybe at this point, maybe half a tank or three quarters of tank extra. So go off your guard, you know. Again, probably.
The first one was 43,000 approximately, and it was a higher rate.
Yeah, I was just wondering if on a percentage basis, what increase was.
Yeah, we did quantify that, because everybody's rate for this formula is different.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the reimbursements on the gas piece, like based on the 10 and 40, range anywhere from $35 for a van and then upwards of like $270 for a diesel run plus. And that would be like a monthly reimbursement. This one I did based on what we actually paid, or going to pay on Friday for the runs. I calculated that out and it's based on 17 days of reimbursement for the contract.
Okay.
Jane, you're saying for the gas buses, do a separate, a little bit less than the diesel buses?
Well, I can't be sure on that because of the difference in consumption. I'm not an expert on it, but I do see the difference between a van, if we're giving 4 cents. If we're only giving 4 cents for the gas buses, we're obviously not giving them the same kind of reimbursement that we are giving 10 cents for a diesel bus.
So maybe it just makes sense to split it by vans versus buses?
Yeah, I would rather see it that way personally.
Well, that's what we have, right?
No, Jane, it was gas versus diesel.
And I would rather do a van versus buses personally.
Are we okay? Does anybody have any thoughts on the 10, 4 versus the 12, 5? The drivers, a little bit of research that I've done, they were, 12 didn't, 10 definitely didn't cover the increased fuel costs. 12 was a little closer to actually covering the current increased fuel cost. This is also only through the end of the year. Potentially, state reimbursement will be more for next year. So we'll cross that vision and get to it.
Well, yeah, for next year, we know the formula will increase 7% for next year. So there'll be an increase in formula for the 22, 23 year, 7%. And that would take into account a lot of what's going on right now.
Yeah, because he was actually talking about it.
Is it...
Mr. Enslon, so let's see. Gary, we're pitching the spot versus... Do you have a preference? Do you have a thought as to 10 versus 12 for the, or 10 and 4 versus 12 and 5? I know you did a little research.
How far we back, Amy, to February?
No.
February 22, which is the first day of this pay period that we're paying.
Everyone go to 12? How is 12 cents going to affect your budget?
So 12, if we do 12 and 5, it costs about roughly around $53,000 from now until the end of the year to cover that cost. It's a one-time cost that we...
Do you agree with that?
No.
The first one was about 43.
And that's, I say approximate because the mileage does change. We had a kid or we take a kid off of the bus or there's a new run, that's all. It might be slightly different than that. That's an idea of where we're paying.
Okay, and I agree. 12 and 5, is there anybody not okay with that?
12 with buses and...
And 5 for...
So then that's not going to be 53 then?
Right, we have to calculate it. I just kind of gazed, there's probably about 10 buses that run on gas. So we have to recalculate that at the 12 cents.
Instead of...
Instead of the 5 for the gas run.
But we're still okay financially?
So maybe you add a couple thousand dollars to that. So maybe we're looking at more like 55,000 rather than 53. I can recalculate, lay that and have it for you for the meeting.
The buses are gas and buses, they're still paying the buck a gallon less.
Yes. But they get probably less mileage, right?
They'd be pretty close to the same.
That was a conversation that Jane brought up.
They'd be pretty close to the same. It would be not that expensive for the gas.
All right, so but the gas, full-size bus should be lumped in with the diesel as far as the reimbursements, right?
Sure. I mean, just saying that the gas is paying a dollar a gallon less. The gas bus is paying a dollar a gallon less than the diesel bus for fuel.
So then we wouldn't be shortchanging the gas buses drivers?
Right.
If we did just at the 5 cents?
Correct.
So then I would think we should stay at the 5 cents.
Now, the conversation we were having was gas. Are we differentiating the size of the vehicle or the type of fuel?
It was fuel.
Not on the accident, I say, I say type of vehicle because of the huge discrepancy in mileage between a van, what it can achieve in gas mileage, and what a full-size bus takes.
Right, the mileage on a bus, even if it's 8 to 10 versus a van that's pushing 18 to 20 maybe? So they began...
I know the same, Jane.
What I'm saying is that the amount of mileage, say you're doing a van run, you might get 20 miles per gallon. You're going to be less than depending on the bus.
Right.
Right. But a gas bus is only getting 4 cents a mile or 5 cents, depending on which way we go, as opposed to, you see what I mean?
Maybe do we do the three-way, 12, 10, and 5, or something to that effect?
Yeah, we could do that. That would work.
Oh, because we make it harder on workers.
Yeah, we're fine if we make this too complicated.
Okay, I mean, I have it all in spreadsheet. It would just be a matter of recalculating the gas-powered buses.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that's realistic. Are you okay with that?
So a third, like a third category for just the gas-powered buses to 10 cents. Correct? Okay, just want to make sure that I got that right.
Do we know how many gas buses there are?
There's only about 10. I just kind of scanned it really quick. I don't...
Mini buses, which category?
So just full-size buses?
Yeah, that's okay. 12, 10, and 5. What we got there?
Yeah, I did, I did put a motion together, just so I think you're an idea of what it would say. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve a fuel subsidy for our transportation contractors. This subsidy will run from February 22 through the end of this school year in June of 2022. Each mile driven will receive, like this listed 10 and 4, but we'll change that. We'll say 10 for diesel buses, no, 12 for diesel buses, 10 for gas buses, and 5 for gas vans.
Maybe just put, because then it would be those smaller buses to remaining gas vehicles.
Yeah, remaining vehicles, yes. And then I'll put the approximate cost. So you'll see that when the agenda goes out to everyone, what that recalculated cost would be.
Do we have to put full-size gas buses?
Yeah.
Listen, I'm just trying to be as...
You don't, you guys on the basis, yeah.
Thank you. I create, I just want to make sure so there's no confusion. Who's getting what?
Clear as possible.
Clear as possible. Yeah. No, it just avoids confusion.
Yeah.
Answer all the questions before... Okay.
Okay, number 15, we have a driver, a new driver. Any questions there? Number 16 is an MOU, which we can follow up with in the executive. It's referring to the sick time. Number 17 is a retainer. I'll turn it over to Rose again briefly for this. But this is for human resources, monitoring and providing us with some consultation as well as some documentation services for Section 125, trash exchange, and etc.
Yeah, this is, this is an agreement that we've done for many years. It's where they help us if we have like a particular plan that we need to get filed with the Department of Labor and Industry, if we change any of our benefits. Also with our Section 125, the administration of that. And whenever we issue like our yearly renewals for all of our health care, there's certain requirements that need to be included in that notice to all of our employees. They help us make sure that we've covered all of the notices and we've got everything, you know, legally in there that we need to have in there. With the Affordable Care Act, there were a lot of changes that had been to place during that. We need to make sure that all the notices go out. So they kind of help us with some consultative data, but I am looking at the company we've used for many years, and I'm also looking at another company just to get another... But I am looking at, um, the company we've used for many years, and I'm also looking at another company just to get another quote and see what's best, um, for us moving forward. So I will hopefully have that figured out by tomorrow or Friday. I did get a second call in, so I just need to review that and make sure, you know, if it's, if something I wanna recommend or who I wanna recommend staying with, the company that we're using for that, so I'll have that for you.
Is the company that we're with now looking for a more, more expensive contract?
Um, no. We can talk about that a little bit more in executive session if we need to.
Have they done a decent job?
Yes.
What's section one twenty-five?
That's the flexible spending.
Okay.
So it's, uh.
That one orders?
Yeah, pretext.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna follow up with that. Number eighteen are overnight trips for a van for FBLA as well as our honor society. Uh, these are for state, uh, state conferences as well as the annual honor society, uh, trip.
Well, one kid is going from van? Or is it?
Yes, yeah, currently, yeah.
I think maybe two, there. I think there's two, I think there's two or something.
There's that, right?
Yeah, I do believe, yeah. I think when they put the paperwork in, they weren't sure, but I'm pretty sure there's two somewhere.
Uh, number nineteen is an agreement with St. Joseph's Center, uh, agreed to pay for access and services provided on an as new basis determined by the child's IEP. And that is for next school year. Number twenty, uh, we do have a substitute for the cafeteria. Uh, letter, letter B, we have, uh, a few retirements as well as, uh, two resignations. And we can discuss those in executive as well. Uh, letter C, we have a sabbatical request for next spring, so the spring of twenty-three. For professional development. Letter D, uh, we have, uh, some recommendations for a few positions, uh, which again, we will go over in executive in, in detail. And then letter A, we have advisors, the listed advisors that are set as attachment, uh, for next school year. Letter F, these are the appointments for our student assistance program, team members for next school year for both the middle and high school. Letter G is the extended school year appointments. Uh, this is the summer program for special education and early intervention. As listed there in those positions, as well as the rates. Letter H, uh, we have appointments for summer school. Uh, and we were waiting on one more, uh, so we may have another individual on there for next week for the agenda. Not likely we'll have it for the agenda. Letter I, coaching salary adjustments, uh, as a result of the, uh, situation with our wrestling program, as listed. Letter J, appointment for junior high softball for the spring, for the current, uh, springs of the season. Letter K is, uh, appointment of two volunteers for track and field as well as uniform track. And then we have, uh, some dates coming up with, for April, uh, as you can see, it starts to heat up now at this time of year, musicals, conferences, um, the Easter break, Byron, Junior Information, IPSSAs, and title award tonight. And then administrative records, correspondence, federal programs, et cetera. So that is our agenda, does anybody have any questions pertaining to the agenda?
I have a question, please. Um, MOU.
Yes, memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding, and that was in relationship?
I'm sorry?
And, and that was for what policy, or is that a?
That's an amendment to a, a current contract that, uh, we need to discuss in executive session.
Okay.
This is pertaining to personnel.
Okay, so personnel that we have here in the school, or personnel from the outside, personnel of the school?
School district personnel, yes.
Okay, and that would be, um, something that would be considered a fairly routine thing to, to have a change for the personnel?
Whatever the change to the contracts in the union positions, there needs to be a memorandum of understanding.
Okay, so is this just a?
Fairly routine, it's, it's.
Fair routine, okay, and do these kinds of things include the possibility of changes in the costs to the district? Or is it more mundane?
It can cover just about any changes in the contract.
Okay, and then how?
And there can be changes that are currently being there or changes that are being added.
Okay, and this is all involving things that are part of our normal contracts, but it's just this individual's changes?
If there, if there are any changes to any language within the contract, or we have to modify it for whatever reason, we would agree to the terms set forth by, by both the board and whichever association we've ever negotiated.
Okay, and, um, I'm sorry, I couldn't quite follow what number seventeen was.
So seventeen is an agreement with, we have yet to determine the company that we're going to be working with, uh, the prior company. We're still waiting for quotes to come in. Ms. Samick was gathering quotes to see which might be a better situation for us to ma- to manage, uh, some of our human resource documentation, um, and consultation.
And, and who do we use now?
Uh, currently it's Dehay McAndrews.
I'm sorry, could you spell?
D E H A Y, McAndrew.
D E H Y, McAndrew. So that would be in previous meeting?
Close enough, I think it's close enough, we could.
Okay.
Definitely.
And, I'm sorry, just one more, please. Um, F, appointment of student, student assistants?
Yes.
And, and what are student assistants?
Uh, basically, that is a group that, um, gets referrals for students that may have a particular need to cross-section personnel, teachers, uh, school nurses, guidance counselors, administration, uh, to identify any potential services that we may provide to students such as, um, um, mental health, drug and alcohol, tutoring services, um, there's a gamut of, of things that we, we look at depending on the student need.
Okay, and these are additional student assistants that we need to add into our?
No, these are currently, we, these are annual appointments.
Okay, so this is an annual renewal of a position? And just new individuals are being considered for that job?
Every year, they're asked to, uh.
Reapply.
Reapply for the position. Do they have special training? Correct, yes, they, they're provided.
We've been doing it for about thirty years, I guess, or more.
Correct, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
This is a quick request as a substitute. I would love for teachers, when they write their plans at the top of the page or some, like where I can see it, to let me know who the specialized kids are in class. I actually was frightened a couple, last month, I was in a, um, in art class and this kid's acting up. And, you know, I'm asking him to stop this and that, he's like, sit down, excuse me, please sit down. And by the tone of his, I'm saying, this kid's gonna wham me. And then I found, I had to go ask the specialized teachers, um, do you know this kid? Oh yeah, he's one of ours. He's very smart, but socially, he's, he can't deal socially, so he had, I would treat him a lot differently than I would treat little Jimmy who's just acting up. And it's frightening, and even in the elementary school, I don't wanna, you know, yell at some kid who's being beaten up at home and not know, you know what I'm saying? So if I could know who the specialized kids are and what not to do, that would be so helpful, and all these subs agree with me, because we don't know all of them.
It's a valid concern, I understand, um, however, we do have to be careful with confidentiality as well.
Absolutely.
Individuals that are working with those students, but we can discuss administratively how that may look if, if possible.
Thank you so much.
I have a question for Rose, I think it's for Rose. The tax assessment, the, the reassessment, our millage will come, am I correct that our millage will come down to reach a revenue neutral base? Okay, and when, when does that go into effect for, I know when it goes into effect for the county, but.
Right, twenty-twenty-three, so it'll be.
In the middle of our fiscal year?
No, yeah, it would affect us during our, when we renew our, um, taxes and budget.
So twenty-three, twenty-four?
Yeah, our twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah, I wanted to be sure we made that clear to everyone, you just, I know we got a joint email from a concerned citizen about.
That's why I asked.
Tax increases, I, I spoke to her today, I also spoke to one of our commissioners, that, as Rose said, it's gonna be, uh, revenue neutral for the county. The school district is basically the same, but we have a slight difference, we can go in the index. So potentially we will adjust accordingly. Uh, and it was put to me, if, if anybody does ask any of you individually, uh, through the county right now, your home was assessed at a hundred thousand dollars and it went up eighty percent, so it went to a hundred and eighty thousand. We'll potentially see this tax increase. If you're under that eighty percent threshold, you will likely not see a tax increase. If you're, so, and it still follows that third, third, a third will likely see a decrease, a third will likely stay about the same, and a third will potentially go up. So if you have a late-front home that was worth a hundred fifty thousand and you put a two hundred thousand dollar addition on, you're gonna probably pay a little more on both levels, uh, coming in twenty-twenty-three. But it's nowhere near, cause the, the assessed, the millage rates will have to be adjusted accordingly, and that's kind of a, that's a rule or a law that we have to follow. So once they re, once we get those numbers, it will change, and our mill rates will likely go down.
Yeah.
We don't know, we don't have those numbers yet was the, the short answer, and the average person will not be affected dramatically.
Yeah, there's a formula that we'll have to do once the county provides us with the, the finalized assessments. And our revenue generated from a mill needs to be equal to within a certain percentage of what we currently generate with our current, like mills, our current mills are seventeen point something. Um, so it's not gonna be seventeen point something, it will be whatever that equalized is, whether it be ten mills or five mills. You know, I don't have an idea of what that now, what that is now, I don't have.
Sure.
Any overall numbers, because the county is still working through that.
Right.
So we're kind of clear on that, just, if you have a question, it's, because it seems, Rosa, that they, the district council has been forwarding, or been getting some.
Yeah, we've been getting.
As those letters are coming out, people are gonna start asking, they're gonna probably ask all of us, so.
And I think the important thing now is for anybody that is getting those letters, need to look at their reassessment, and if they do have an issue or think that it is not correct, they need to make those appointments with the county to have that re-looked at, that's, that's the important piece right now.
And the county's actually.
And then you move forward, well.
You only have like five days to make your appointment, too.
And the county's actually asking for, and if there is a discrepancy, they feel it's wrong, to definitely come in and do.
To make those appointments, yeah.
Yeah, when we don't do that on an individual basis in the district, that's all done through the county. So if they need to, and it could be any, for any reason, if a part of your house fell off in the last, since two thousand and four, obviously they didn't even know that, so. They, they did actually encourage anybody that had any questions to do the appeal process, so.
Good, okay, anyone else regarding the agenda? Okay, we'll, uh, break for executive and give a few items there.